Well, I will call the Board of Selectmen to order for this special meeting, joint meeting of the Board of Finance and Board of Selectmen.
And I'll call together, a call to order the Board of Finance for this joint meeting.
And if you would all please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, before we get going, there's one announcement I want to make. There's, there's one change that we did this year in the open gov system. You will notice that we put the revenue for some departments generate revenues, others don't. We had, I had Bob and Brad put in the, for departments that do generate revenue, I, I put that, we put that in there so you could see it. Just as a reminder, that revenue does not directly offset that department expenses, it just goes into the general fund. But we did this just as a, as a way to, for the Board of Finance, Board of Selectmen members to know exactly how much revenue does come in from the different departments, so you can, you can see what the, what, what that number is. So departments like Town Clerk, Building Department, Health Department, and so on. You will see that number in the, in the revenue line. It's not perfectly clean because Munis doesn't line up exactly, but is, just as a general rule, you can see, you can see what that is. So I welcome everybody, welcome Board of Finance, welcome Board of Selectmen, welcome guests and department heads who are with us tonight. And we're going to start right off with the Town Clerk, Department 130, so Lisa Berg, Town Clerk, we will turn the microphone over to you. Thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you for having me. Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me okay? Okay. Well, this is a little different, I'm not used to this, but I'm gonna give it my best shot. Town Clerk's office, I have reduced all my, all of my accounts and also kept them the same. If they, if they have not been reduced, I'm trying to get to a hang on a second for me. All right, well, I've got Bob's face, I'm gonna talk to Bob directly. That's all I can see. So anyway, all the accounts I've reduced or have remained the same within this proposed budget. All the man, a lot of the, the funding was not used, including the Town Clerk conferences because they were canceled due to the virus, so we saved money in those accounts. Also, very large savings in my budget of this past year was trying to, I'm sorry, I just want to be able to see everybody when I'm talking. The large savings was not having to post legal notices in the newspaper due to the exec, the governor's executive order. Real estate recording and town conveyance tax has realized ninety-two percent of all of last year's total in the first six months of this fiscal year. Land records have been exploding. It is just outrageous. The volume, as everyone knows from the real estate market, houses are lasting for three, four days and going at full asking price, so all of those transfers come through my office. And so we have realized quite a bit of conveyance tax. In fact, the attachment that I put in with that shows that we had realized three hundred and eighteen thousand, six hundred and forty-four thousand dollars from July through December of this year, whereas the same period last year was two hundred and six thousand, one hundred and fifty-three. All of last year, we had made three hundred and forty-five thousand, four seventy-eight. So like I said, it's ninety-two percent of all of last year's total. I, what else? So, you know, our office is doing well, we're doing rotating schedules, we're working from home and then keeping one person in the office to handle day-to-day routines and duties. And the other two of us are working from home, we're hooked up into this computer system. Everything's working well. It has been challenging this year, we've worked it out, the election was a huge challenge. We got it done and we got it done well, and it was, we came out, I think, shining due to the work from the registrars in my office and we increased seven hundred percent in the amount of absentee ballots that we normally issue. The other thing that I am putting forth, as if you, you know, if you'd read my detailed report, is that my salary is up again for review. I am up for reelection in November. The last time I had had a raise was four years ago. I did a, the salary survey for sixteen towns that responded. The average salary for that, those sixteen towns is eighty-eight thousand, two hundred and forty-eight dollars. I am the second lowest paid full-time Town Clerk out of these sixteen towns. I've been in office eighteen years. I have recently been elected Vice President of the Fairfield Town, the County Town Clerks Association. I have gained additional certification within the last four years. I'm now CCTC and CMC. Connecticut Certified Municipal Clerk and a Connecticut Certified Town Clerk as well. I realize that it's tough times. But because of the way that the charter is written, every four years, my salary is up for review. And that was the last time I gained an increase. So just my proposal would be if you would consider it as a two percent moving forward for every year for the next four years in increments. So that's basically it. I've done, I think I've done a pretty good job the last several years, or actually in the last eighteen years. I give it my all, I'm on, hands-on, there are many Town Clerks that are name-only. And I would appreciate, you know, the consideration. Are there any questions?
I can't see everybody on the board.
I can't either, I don't know what's going on.
So I would just ask if the Board of Finance members have a question. If you could start to talk, and as long as nobody else is talking, finish the question.
Could Brad take the screen down so that we could see everybody? Or whoever's screen, yeah, there you go. So, I mean, Lisa, come on, your, your professionalism and your attention to detail and hard work totally always, I've always, you know, been on your side. And I just have this, I had this idea, and I'm, I'm think, I know that you're, the salary is up for review, but what I want to ask, and maybe it's a question for Marty, or maybe Matt knows. What would be the possibility, since the charter says we have to review this salary this year, could it be deferred to next year in the sense of I'm sort of taking a stand in a way, like I'm looking very carefully at raises? And especially in this time and, and what it represents, and I say this with all due respect, Lisa, it's just that people are just, you know, and it's not gonna be yours that puts it over the top, obviously, but, you know, that's just my question. Is it possible to do anything in, with the, with that charter provision that will let us table it for next year? Do you know, Matt?
Well, I know that it is written, according to what I've been told, that it can be reviewed every year, and mine hasn't been in four years. So, you know, I, I love my job, I think you know I love my job, I think it shows that I love my job. I have, if you look at the salary survey that I included in my budget proposal, I'm sorry, but, you know, like I said, I am the second lowest paid in the sixteen towns with, you know, over fifteen years' experience. And I'm not, you know, I'm not immune to what is actually going on. I just, I feel that the level of responsibility for this position, the elections, the, that was a huge undertaking. The, the amount of responsibility to, to make sure that every person got their absentee ballots, we went off without a hitch, there was not one hitch. And out of four thousand absentee balloters, that's not an easy task, and that was a huge amount of responsibility, and I gotta tell you, I was a nervous wreck. I was in Matt's office on the verge of tears because the pressure alone of not saying, I said to him, I don't want Bethel on the front page of the newspaper. This is something we've never done before. And I'm sorry, but the lowest paid in the sixteen towns, there are Town Clerks that don't even do anything in their offices and they make more than I do. And I'm not saying that poor me, poor me, because like I said, you're gonna get the same amount of work out of me, if not more. But I think that the position needs to be compensated appropriately. And, you know, I feel like I go up and, and throw this at you guys every time I'm, I'm up. But, you know, the fact of the matter is that some of the assistants make more or close to what I make. So I just feel like it needs to be reviewed.
Yeah, Cynthia still has her hand up, which I'm
Only because I just want to follow up just briefly and, and just for, for Lisa, understand this has nothing to do with any part of what you do and, and even, you, you know, I'm, I'm glad to know what you're doing, but I know that you work your butt off. But I'm just saying, from a personal standpoint, it's gonna be, it's very hard for me to take a stand on something and make an exception. So that's why I'm trying to get around it, maybe even deferred. I adore you, Lisa, this is hard, you know, because people, you know what's going on out there, and it's, it is, it, it, it's, it's really sad, you know, some people I talk to who literally are losing their jobs. So I'm just trying to be, you know, fair and also to to, you know, maybe ask the indulgence of certain people like yourself. Not that you do not deserve it, my gosh, of course you deserve it. So it's not about that, I just want you to know that.
I appreciate that.
Cynthia, I would, I would just direct you to the Charter, Section ten-nine, we've talked about it before. I'd rather not have another discussion about it with all the folks around the line, but why don't you look at that Charter section?
Oh, okay.
If we talk about it at our
I know what it says, I was there for the Charter revision when it was added in, I know exactly what it says.
And you got an answer to your question asked earlier. Okay, Matt?
Can't hear you, Matt.
Can I find the technology around here? How's that?
Not good.
No, no, it's not.
All right, hold on.
Just queuing up, I got Nick after Matt.
All right, how's that? Better, okay. To your question, Cynthia, the Charter requires that you review the salary, it does not mean you have to change it. Having said that, I'm gonna throw my personal opinion in this, because this comes up, really, this issue comes up, whether it's a good year or a bad year. And I, I do want to emphasize something that Lisa said. It's no accident that we have good, clean elections. And I want to point to some things that have happened in the past. You might remember, there was a ballot problem in the city of Bridgeport that took months to straighten out. And it's the courts, lawsuits, an awful lot of pain and suffering in that city to fix it. There was even an incident in Bethel in nineteen ninety, was it ninety-nine or two thousand and one? Where Judy Nowacek sued the town because there was an error in one of the machines, that's when we had the old machine to go back and forth. Just to share my personal opinion, I, I believe very strongly that with positions like this, by the way, not very many Town Clerks left in the state are elected, they're mostly appointed. And just a few years ago, the Danbury Town Clerk was hired away by another town. I think we have to stop treating people as if these are political positions, they're not. They're elected, you go through a political process, yes. But if they are performing for you, if they are performing for our town, they should be compensated. Because to the point that Cynthia just made, this is, this is not even a blip in the budget. So it's, it's really a dangerous thing to go down the road where we're, we're holding up employees who are doing a good job for the sake of political appearances, and basically that's what it is. I, I, I support Lisa's request, I think it's fair, and I think it's appropriate. So I, thank you very much for the opportunity to speak.
Nick, I had you up next, and it looks like Brian is in line after Nick.
All right, I, I like to just address what Matt had just said. For the last sixteen years, the Republicans haven't cross-endorsed Lisa because she's doing a good job. We don't make it a political thing, we feel on the Republican side that she is doing a good job, that's why we cross-endorse her. So I just want to address that, we're not, we don't play political with someone that's doing a good job. But thank you, Matt. Lisa, I think about either six to eight months ago, we added five thousand to your salary. I know you were taking, you took on some other responsibilities, but was that five thousand added in when you did the sixteen towns survey?
No. No, you, you're talking about the stipend? The stipend for doing the train station?
Yes.
No, I did not. I'm sorry.
You didn't consider that in your, in your salary?
I didn't, not with the, because I took the base salary of the Town Clerks and added it to the, the salary survey of what the other Town Clerks are making, and they are published as their salary, not any stipend that they receive for other duties that they perform.
But you consider it salary, right? I mean, the five thousand every year?
No, I do not, I consider that compensation for doing the train station management, which is a, a, a good job. I mean, it's
A responsibility, I, I get it, but you're doing that in, in the, in the day, during the day, right? You're not doing it on weekends or anything?
I do my job twenty-four-seven, if I have a problem with that train station and I get, I check in and see that there's something wrong with it, I'm there. I mean, it doesn't, doesn't matter, that, I work that way with my job anyway, and I've been there on Saturdays, Sundays, whatever it takes to get the job done. Now, when I proposed the, the stipend for doing that extra work and managing all the parking for the train station, which is a job in itself, I specifically said, I, I did not want this to affect the position or the salary of the Town Clerk, because I knew that would come into play. Bottom line is, the base salary for the Town Clerk out of the sixteen towns is the second lowest paid. So, you know, if you, honestly, for the amount of experience I have, the certification that I have, I was just elected VP for Fairfield County. I think I've done a great job for Bethel, I think that, you know, the salary is underpaid. And, you know, I just feel that, you know, it should be brought up to a more low and I just don't feel that it's, it's a, it's a comparative salary to what other Town Clerks are making.
Thank you.
Brian?
I, I just want to say, I think in fairness to Lisa, we should discuss this with her at a regular meeting where we can put her on the agenda. And she has, you know, more time to prepare and we're able to talk to her just in a smaller group. There's a lot of people waiting to go and, you know, I think Lisa presented well, and I think, again, in fairness to her, we should give this more attention at, you know, we could talk about it at our next regular meeting or whenever you want to put it on the agenda.
For folks who are on the call, that's how we've handled these things in prior years. We, we use the, let me finish, please, we use the contingency account to provide for monies. And then we actually talk about the individual roles subsequent to the budget passing.
Please don't misunderstand me, I appreciate my job, I love my job, I appreciate what you all do. I know the time you put in, the effort that you put in. And, you know, I, this is very difficult for me every time to come forward. And you won't hear from me for another four years. This is the opportunity that I have, I put it forward, I would be happy to attend a special meeting with you, I appreciate the opportunity.
Appreciate that, Lisa, and maybe you'll find a little bit of relief in that. According to the Charter and what this board has done the last few years is we actually review your salary every year. That's what the Charter and that's what that section that I refer to, ten-nine, provides for. And so we'll, we'll do it as, as Brian suggested, and we'll do it again that way this year. So, well, well-stated argument and we'll, we'll follow up. All right, any more questions for Lisa? Again, I can't see everybody, gonna bounce around screens. Cynthia, was that a question or just a, a scratch? All right, I think, Lisa, I think, unless Matt, Board of Selectmen have more questions, we're
No, I don't.
I pretty much reduced the whole, the whole budget, or kept it the same. So there's really, unless, you know, questions regarding the, the, the cost of, of things, then I'm, I'm set, thank you.
Thank you very much, Lisa, appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, Lisa, so we're move on to Department one-fifty Tax Collector, like to welcome Anne Skakel. I think Anne is somewhere in my Hollywood Squares screen here. Anne, you're, you're muted, you gotta, gotta unmute.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I also decreased my budget this year, I decreased it by two thousand dollars. Last year, I decreased it by three thousand dollars. That, both of those decreases are representative of the change in format of the bills. Last year, I cautiously reduced it, because at the time, I did not know the cost of the supplemental bill mailing. This year here, I took out an additional two thousand dollars in postage so that it reduced my overall budget. Everything else pretty much stayed the same, like Lisa stated in her presentation. We have not used much of our education budget because of COVID. I do expect my education budget to be used this year, it depends on what the associations and what the state is gonna require. If our meetings go to Zoom and they are less costly, then you know, obviously, we won't use the money. But I do have a new person in the tax office, Delaney, the clerk we had retired. So the new clerk will have to go through training. For the rest of us, we have to get fifty hours every five years of training. This past year, we barely got any, because there just wasn't anything available. There were only a few classes, so you know, that's pretty much it, I have additional monies that are in the IT budget. It's about, close to seventeen thousand, that went up by about three hundred and sixty dollars. And that's really all I have.
Brad, can you take down the page? Board of Finance, any questions for you?
No questions? I, I can say, if you're interested, collections are on track. We're actually, at the end of January, we were slightly higher than we were last year at this time. I won't say where we'll be at the end of April, obviously, there are delinquents. We did not have very many people apply for the deferral program in January. So that's really something that I, is not even under consideration, I've only had seven people apply. So, we're, we're doing okay.
And when, when folks come into your office, are they kind of describing what's going on in their financial lives?
We have not had people in the office, people are leaving their payments, mailing them in, doing them online. People are not in the office right now. I do have some people, but not as many as you would think.
About phone calls, are they calling you in and, and are you hearing anything about unemployment, jobs?
No, no, and as I said, I only had seven people apply for the deferral program. Anyone who calls, we recommended that they apply, but we have not had a great deal of that, to be honest with you. I don't know if they think that they can't make arrangements, I'm always happy to make arrangements with them, or they we're, we're right where we should be.
Matt, I don't think we have any more questions from the Board of Finance.
Any, Richard Paul?
No, nothing.
Okay. All right, then we'll move on, thank you very much, Anne.
Thank you.
Next, Department three-eighty Parks and Recreation, Eileen Earl, thank you very much for being here.
Okay, I think the chairman of the commission is on Pat Morton, so
Yeah, so, so we, we discussed our proposed budget at the last couple meetings, and the budget we're proposing has got a one-point-three percent increase, which is mostly negotiations salaries. That was a two-year negotiation, so we got hit with two years at one time, so that's, that's the jump in that, and then we came down in some things, and I'm gonna let Eileen get into the nuts and bolts of it.
Okay, so, um, so basically, I, I tried to do a one percent increase, but between the minimum wage being, going up through this next fiscal year, another dollar, as well as the salaries for our full-time maintenance staff. There was a jump there of like, about sixteen thousand dollars, because it was a two-year contract that got approved. Then I decided to look at my office expenses, dues and education accounts, and reduce them with able-to-not-print flyers. Reduce meetings that we go to and other supplies. And then I did increase the equipment maintenance and park maintenance repairs, because those have been two accounts in the past two years that have been reduced, and I felt like we need to have them increased to keep our facilities up to par, and with COVID, our parks and facilities were busier than ever. And then we want to always keep our athletic fields and that with the park maintenance repairs, we've had to repair fences because trees have fallen down on them the past year. So we always need to have funds available for any repairs like that. Our program account, we did go down this year with elimination of some programs that we haven't been able to get running. And we haven't been able to run as many programs as we would like with the restrictions. But we feel as, that we, we get better with COVID and the restrictions are gonna get hopefully lifted, and spring starting, we're gonna plan on doing a lot of activities outdoors as well as plan our summer camp programs. Because now we have two schools that have been finished with renovations, and we're hoping to utilize them as well as plan to be, do a lot of activities outdoors. So we've left our program account pretty much intact, hoping that come July, we are in full swing in being able to run programs.
Can we hold up one second? Dion, Cynthia is trying to get logged back on, she says it's not letting her in.
I don't have an invite, there, nope, there's Matt trying to log back on, but I don't have an invite from Cynthia.
All right, I'll tell her to try again, that you don't have an invite.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Eileen, last year, I understand that, of course, your programs took a huge hit. We weren't able to run them, as did the revenues. Now we're back projecting that we'll have some programs and some revenues. What's your expectation in terms of revenue offset to the program cost you're putting here?
Uh, starting in July?
Yes.
Uh, it's very similar to it's, um, my income is estimated at close to 600,000 with our programs being in full swing. You know, so if we can start July, we can, you know, run our full summer program and then we can run our fall programs and and then run our, um, you know, full scale of being able to run everything that we've done in the past. So I'm, I'm planning on being a full, full programs and, and hopefully a lot of new activities with we were able to do a trivia night and we want to have that keep on going. We did several movie nights and we've worked with Steiner Corporation and they've offered to sponsor us for several movie nights this year, which is, is good. So as hopefully we get COVID under control, we can do things and we're gonna still do things with the restrictions. We've learned a lot about the restrictions, so we're gonna be planning accordingly. So we're still gonna be able to run programs. It just may not be as big. So we may be having to offer two sessions of something that only can take 10 kids instead of one session of something that can take 20 kids based on the limitations that they're, they're having. As, um, you know, so.
So in that example, you would have to pay employees two times what you had in the past, but have the same revenue. Is that correct?
Yeah, you know, I might have to offset and increase a program fee if we have to, you know, if we have to pay the instructor certain amount, we only have 10 kids. And we would normally have 20 kids and it would have to, we would have to evaluate making sure we're covering that expense. Which would be more income.
So what's your confidence factor that will be able to get back to where we like to be in July?
I'm confident that we would be able to be in good shape with like somewhat what we normal in September. Camp will be a little bit different because I think we'll still have some restrictions on numbers like we might only be able to have 10 kids in a room at a time. So that may limit up the number of kids we can have total from like 80 kids at a camp, one camp to 60 kids or 50 kids. But I feel based on what I'm hearing with, you know, hopefully COVID getting under control, September, we're running, you know, gymnastics again, we're running our full preschool program, which we're limited right now to take 16 kids, which in September, we are taking only eight kids signed up. Now in our preschool programs, there's a waiting list because we're only allowed to take 16. We could take up to 20 kids normally in, in all our programs. So I feel in September, we'll be in full swing and full basketball program and you know, that, that, that's how I feel. I'm running after school sports programs at the schools because right now we were not able to do that as well. So.
Thank you. We'll use you as a barometer in terms of our confidence in returning to a, a full, healthy economy.
Yeah, well, we want to try and it's the, from March, let's say April first to October 31st, we can do a lot outside. So I think we're gonna be doing a lot more of that. So. So.
Brad, can you take down the page? Again, I just can't see the Board of Finance members. Any other question?
Before.
I'm sorry, say again, Brad.
Cynthia had her hand raised.
Raised.
Yeah, I've got two hands. I got the little yellow hand. Like, yeah. So my question to Eileen is the, the, the repairs and maintenance, why would that jump like that? 17%.
Because last year I, from what I've been trying to get over the past two years, you have cut. And so we tried to repair facilities, the wear care of facilities, replacing fences, replacing backstops, doing sod repairs. So we want to be able to do all those that we've have not been able to do over the past years.
Okay, and could you just tell me how much of the salary allotment is, is non-union? Then based.
Let's see. There is 381,800 is part-time salaries, which is summer camp staff, part-time maintenance, before and after care staff and the team center staff.
Okay, that's my next question. Were you doing after care because the schools weren't open?
We were, we were doing when the schools were virtual, um, in hybrid, we, we were doing a care for the teachers for their, their, uh, stu-, their kids in what we called hybrid daycare for the teachers. And we did after care or before care for the kids that were in school. And then of course, when they would go virtual, we would not have that expense. But now they're in full swing. So our before and after care staff are fully working and fully, we're getting income from those programs, from those two programs now.
Okay, one more quick question. So of the 838,000, you're saying that if I take away the 381,800, the rest are all union contracts?
They're all full, related to full-time staff.
That, that's not my question. My question is, are they contracted employees? Like yourself, are you a union?
No, I am not a union employee.
Okay, and are there any, I'm just, I just want to know.
There's, there's, there are four staff that are union employees under that amount of number. But there's things related to those unions.
Can you, okay, just want to know. I'm sorry, I just.
Go ahead, sorry.
I just want to know that the number that's associated with the four contracted employees, that's all.
The four full-time employee salaries is 230,194.
Thank you.
Bob, I have a question.
Go ahead, Nick. Thank you.
Eileen, you know, I see we, we build these new buildings and town in different facilities and we buy equipment and we try to, you know, do it ourselves, but I see more and more subcontractors. Can you just tell us who is in your budget? You know, um, the, the police department, you know, there were some in their budget, there's some in your budget. Can you just give us a little outline of who you're paying for the subcontractors for these other properties?
The only property that I pay some contractors is someone to mow the lawn at the library.
Okay, so the.
At the library, the police station.
So you're paying for the police department. What about the snow plow? What about the?
Snow plowing comes out of the highway departments. The snow removal contract that.
Okay.
Comes, yeah.
Extra contractor you have in that Fairfield County, not, not calling anybody out, they mow the police department and that's in your budget?
That's in my budget and that's it.
No other, no other subcontractor?
No, like there's, there's someone subcontracted to do some of the schools and that's in the school's budget.
That's in the, I'm sorry, that's in the.
Boards of Ed budget, yes.
And then the firehouses would be in the highway department, I would imagine?
And the firehouses, I mow the firehouses. Oh, the firehouse pays for Bethel Firehouse, but I mow Stony Hill Firehouse.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions among the Board of Finance? I don't see any hands up. Um, I mean, I had one quick question. It looked like the program's amount was brought down by about 16,000. Was that you're trying to estimate the kind of slow recovery from COVID or is there something else driving that?
Um, there were mainly programs that we had not been able to run over the past year or two and we felt like we could reduce it by that amount of, of those programs that we haven't been able to run. So that, you know, nobody signs up for them or something like that. So.
Eileen, I have a quick question. From, um, I mean, I hope we're back to normal in July, right? I'm sure we all do. But from the perspective of what you're hearing from parents, are you getting phone calls asking when programs are gonna start? Do you feel like parents are gonna take advantage of the programs when they do start or will they be skittish about of COVID? Like, what are you hearing?
Um, I'm hearing that people want us to run, uh, programs and especially run camp programs. And I think we follow the guidelines and what the schools have been doing when we run camps and what's other parks and recs have done. We've had people call, as I said, our preschool program started slowly with eight kids in September and now it's 16 with kids on the waiting list. So I feel as, as things hopefully get better and then we're doing these activities outside and kids are used to wearing masks and doing activities. I, I am hoping and I feel confident that I can have staff that will keep kids safe and be able to run programs.
Uh, Dailene, I, I can tell you that my office received a ton of calls in the summer from parents who were very, uh, very strapped because they, you know, they, they needed to go to work and then we couldn't run the programs. That was in the period of time when the governor was still shutting things down and things were going in the other direction and they were not good. But yeah, there, I think there's a lot of pent-up demand to reopen programs as soon as it's safe to do so.
That's good to hear. And, and as far as, um, you know, like sports and field maintenance and all that kind of stuff, we're anticipating that, you know, spring and summer sports are gonna go off, I'm assuming, given.
Based on the, the guidance that has been out there, March first, they'll come out with their new spring sports guidance. On, but everything was pretty successful in, in July and August. And I met last week with all the youth leagues and we are working together to make sure that they can run their programs and they can get the kids out there come sometime after April first.
Good, thank you.
I see that Rich has his hand up, but I, I think Matt, Rich Paul, I think the Board of Finance is done with questions for Park.
Rich, go ahead.
Eileen, I know we're only halfway through the year, but do you foresee any surplus in your budget this year at the end?
I believe that there should be some money left in our program account at the end. But, uh, not as much as people might think because out of the program account is staff that is being utilized to and utilized over the summer to keep clean the municipal center and keep it safe with COVID. We pay the staff that is at the door. When you come in, that staff is being paid out of that account as well. Plus staff that is doing, um, cleaning presently now during the day of wiping down hand, like handrails and that kind of thing. But I do anticipate there'll be some, what that might be, I, I don't want to give you a number.
No.
That, that there could be some of a savings in that, but some of it's being used for for COVID, which could get reimbursed as well as because we're helping with the clinics that are going on. So I have copies and, and those kinds of things. And I've been kind of running it out of that account, but giving it to for emergency management for them to, um, you know, keep track to hopefully get it reimbursed. So.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
All right, Rich and Paul, any other questions?
Yeah, well, one quick question, Eileen. Uh, last year I asked you under the Park Maintenance Program, aerators for the McCullar Pond, is that still on? The agenda?
Yes, I actually met with a water quality company and, uh, we're going to start working with them in the state. I have to get a permit with them to, because air purifiers wouldn't work because it's an algae and it would get stuck in the algae. He came and we, he like looked at it and everything. So we're gonna do some, um, treating of it and trying to work with them to do that. So.
All right, okay, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, if there are no further questions, we're gonna move on. Thank you very much, Eileen, uh, and your department.
Thank you, thank you for your time.
Matt, can I just say one thing for, in, in support of Eileen? I have to let everybody know, not everybody here on this call works in the town hall. The work that she has put into that front desk screening, um, customers coming in, wiping down constant, um, disinfecting, cleaning the bathrooms. I mean, these kids and these employees are phenomenal and those, those people all fall into Eileen and I think she does a phenomenal job. And I just want everybody to know that because you're not inside the town hall to see that what's actually going on. So that's all I had.
Thank you. Uh, that is part of the part-time number two. But moving on to Bethel Fire Department, like to welcome, uh, new chief, Chris McCollum. Chief McCollum, thanks for being here tonight and congratulations again on your election to the position. And you have the floor. And you have to unmute.
Can you hear me now?
Yep, there you are. Go ahead, go ahead.
Our budget is, is baseline zero. There's no increase. We're just, uh, you know, with the times, we understand we need to keep it at a, at a zero increase. You know, there, there is still things, holdovers in the capital that, you know, that can be talked about, you know, with, you know, NFPA compliance issues with air packs and air bottles and things like that, that, you know, we, we have to do. You know, they age out, the air packs age out at 15 years, all the SCBA bottles, the spare bottles on the air packs also age out at 15 years. They're hydro, hydrostatically tested at five years and at 10 years per NFPA standards. And at 15 years, those bottles go out the door and never come back. It's the same thing with the air packs. 15 years, they're done. You have to replace them. You know, so stuff like that, I, I really don't have a choice. It, it needs to be in the budget and we can talk further on that because that's all in capital. The regular operating budget, as I said, we've kept it all at zero. You know, I, I think we can work with that. We're doing our best right now to be responsible with what we're, what we're purchasing. The only other thing in the capital that I added that was not previously in there is to replace all of the bay doors. There's seven in total. The doors themselves are 30 plus years old. A lot of the motors that raise and lower those doors are older than that. And the safety system that the Stony Hill Fire Department currently employs is what we would like to do here. It's basically, uh, the simplest way to put it is it's a red light, green light system. When the doors go up, they're, you know, it's going up, it's going to green. It's coming down, it's going to red. There's a time limit on it. Once you're outside the bay, in case somebody forgets to put the bay down or for security reasons, it comes down in three minutes. So I think for the security of this building also, it's a public building. I think it's very important to have all that replaced and up to date. Luckily, uh, when I had the gentleman here just recently to look at everything, he told me that we can actually reuse the, the tracks that are installed in the building right now. So we don't have to purchase brand-new tracks for the doors. He said they're very good, they're sturdy. And, uh, when they put them in way back, they actually put in ones that were over what were needed. So. But, uh, you know, that, that'll tighten up the building security-wise. And of course, we're also doing, uh, we're working on doing a security system that's a FOB system for the whole building too, which gets rid of all the keys. So you don't have a bunch of keys floating around with people that shouldn't have keys anymore either. So that's, anybody that hasn't used a FOB system before, just so you know what that is, and that's in our, our current budget we're working on. You have a FOB and whatever door you come in, it will register and let us know that you came in the door and what time you came in. And if you try and get in somewhere where you shouldn't, an office that maybe you don't have access to, it'll let us know that too. So the, the doors are keeping with us, trying to get the building more secure and more energy efficient also with doors that are up to date. Anybody wants to see those doors? I would say the chief baker would probably be willing to help us out by showing you his system because that's the same exact system we're trying to put in downtown here.
Uh, chief, can I ask a quick question?
Sure, sure.
I know we, we don't have the capital up, but I think you only have three things.
That's.
So you, I think you have, uh, SCBA bottles.
I do.
Um, and then air packs.
12 and 12.
Okay, and something called an hydraulic ram?
Uh, the hydraulic ram is a carryover. I did, I did not put that in there. I put in the, the. Uh, the hydraulic ram is a carryover. I did, I did not put that in there. I put in the, the, the garage doors instead. I feel the, the doors are, are uh very important, as I said, security wise and also energy efficiency for the taxpayer of the, of this town, of the town, you know, I mean. Those doors really, like I said, they're thirty plus years old. And we've got doors right now that they keep clipping off the antennas on the ambulances. We have to keep replacing antennas. So, you know, and that's not a good thing. Uh, the hydraulics, just so people understand, I think everybody understands that, that the Hearst rescue tools.
Yeah.
Okay, and the Hearst rescue tools originally, and we still have some, have a separate motor and you plug into it and then you plug in the tool you want to use. And you can plug in tools in series and use those tools. You can use the, what they call the, the rams, the spreaders and the cutters. The hydraulics are actually battery operated. So that's the newest thing on the market. They're lighter weight. And we also have with those hydraulics, we have spare batteries. So we have a set of spreaders and a spread, a set of cutters. And what the rest of the money in that budget was for the capital for the last couple of years was to buy the two rams to complement the hydraulics and, and have a complete set of battery operated tools.
Okay.
Uh, I, I can get that when, when I can get it, you know what I mean? It's, we have current rams right now. Then we, you know, we get out, we hook up to a different motor. They're not battery operated.
Okay, so this is an enhancement that would.
That's correct.
The efficiency of the operation, but it's not replacing something that you don't have or filling a void. Okay, I got you.
No, this is, this is in addition to it. We, that would give us a full set of hydraulic tools.
Okay.
Like I said, the, the advantage to the hydraulic tool is that it's battery operated, it's lighter weight. You can pick it up and you can go with it and you're not dragging a hose behind you where you're limited to the length of the hose.
Yeah. Okay, so, and then the, the twelve bottles and air packs, those are all fifteen years old, correct?
They're coming up on fifteen years old. Uh, one of the lieutenants is actually going through everything for me. So that I can, I can supply you with a complete list of when they were purchased, when they expire, because the day they expire, they're done. I got to take them off the ricks.
Sure.
If we use them and something happens, it's a major issue for everybody.
Right, gotcha.
Do that. And the bottles, it's the same thing. As I, as I explained, they're fifteen year life expectancy per NFPA. They're hydrostatically tested at five years and at ten years to make sure that they're still safe in an operation. If they fail that test, they're done then. And I have to replace that bottle then.
Yeah.
I have no choice. It doesn't come back to me. They fail it and it's, it's done. It's out of service.
Yep.
And that, that, they have to do that by law. They can't give it back to me. It's the same thing with firefighting gear. If I have a guy that is out at a call, a guy or a gal, and the firefighting gear somehow gets contaminated, typically what we do is we send it out to be cleaned. If they can't clean it because of whatever it was exposed to, that gear at over four thousand dollars for a complete set of gear does not come back. By law, they cannot give it back to me. It, and I got to take that out of my budget and then we go through the process with the town of Bethel, obviously, to try and get it back through the insurance of wherever we were at, whatever, Paul, we were at.
Mm-hmm.
So that, that's, you know, and that's, this is all stuff that you got to follow.
Yep, okay.
Choice.
Right.
Want a new ladder in the current budget, a thousand dollar ladder.
Yeah.
Thirty foot ladder. We had to buy it because a ladder got damaged at a, you know, in an incident. We had to get a brand new ladder.
Good.
Thank you. For the, while the Board of Finance knows this, um, for, for, for all, what, what the chief is, is pointing out to us is he really has two aspects to his budget. There's the operating budget, which is in the Department 310 with the one hundred and eighty-two thousand nine hundred dollars. That's flat. It's a flat operating budget to last year. The items of safety that you're referring to are items that historically we've paid for out of the capital non-recurring. So at some point in the future, Chief will come back to the Board of Select and then come back to the Board of Finance and request specific payments for those items. Those items again come out of that capital non-recurring account. Um, so that, that, that's just kind of a setting up the, the two aspects, the two dimensions of what Chief was just talking to us about. I guess in, in connection with the Department 310 operating account, any questions from the Board of Finance?
Bob, I'd just like to jump in. Um, Chief, Chris, um, this, this fire department is the best service to this town and I appreciate it from the taxpayers. You kept the, the budget very reasonable. It's one of our smallest budgets, but I think the, the, the best service out there. And uh, I, I appreciate it. Um, and the whole town appreciates it. Thank you for your service.
I, I appreciate that, Nick. And I, you know, I just took over. I'm only into this about a month now and, and we're trying to do our best and and be responsible to the taxpayer because that's the way it should be.
Well, and in continuation of the Chief McCollum Fan Club, uh, I want to thank you too, Chief. The, the level of transparency you brought to this just over the last short period of time since you've been chief is, is tremendously appreciated. Uh, Nick's kind of intimated to the fact that that's important to us, right? That, that rebuilding of the trust factor. So again, appreciate that tremendously. And we'll have more discussions, more in-depth discussions, right, regarding all those capital items when, when we come to the capital non-recurring account. So thank you very.
Sure. And then, and anybody that wants to come here to this department and see the equipment up close, obviously you got to wear a mask coming in the building. But uh, myself and my officers are perfectly willing to let you even come in and put an air pack on your back and understand what we're talking about with these air packs, to show you the bottles, show you the markings on them so you can understand where the markings are that tell you how old it is. You know, just so you understand what we're talking about because uh, I think it's important that you all know. And, and please come down and look at the doors outside and then you know, we'll bring you inside and you can see what we're talking about. And maybe we can compare that to Stony Hill so you can understand what we're talking about with those.
Matt, I think no more questions for Chief on Department 310 operating expenses or operating budget.
Okay. Uh, Rich and Paul, you guys good?
I'm fine.
Okay, great. Thank you very much, Chief. Uh, thanks for being here tonight. Uh, we're going to move on to uh Stony Hill Fire Department. I'd like to welcome Chief John Baker.
Evening everyone, thank you. Um, I don't have any increase in my budget as well. It's flat. Um, we'd asked for one fifty-five the year before. We'd gotten one forty-seven. And we're keeping it to the one forty-seven again this year. We moved a few um costs around in the line items, but I think we can still consider a, uh, making a flat uh increase. The uh COVID didn't really affect us much because the emergency services still has to continue. Um, like Chief McCollum said, we have a lot of items that do still have to be uh tested, maintained, uh certified. Uh, we do have items that have a life expectancy that has to go out and be replaced. Um, so there's not much more I can um, on with the operating budget, but if we needed to go over the um capital non-recurring, I too had a line item in there for the hydraulics. This department does not currently have any of the hydraulic tools. Uh, we've noticed even last year twice, we went up to uh eighty-four for the section that we cover for motor vehicle accidents that went down an embankment. And uh, like Chief McCollum said, the um current system that we use is tethered by a hydraulic hose line that we had to uh take the tool and the hose lines, uh walk down the embankment and try and get to the, to the vehicle. With the hydraulic tools being battery operated, it's basically a wireless uh system, for lack of a better way to describe it. And it's, it's much easier, it's much safer to use. It's like you said, a lighter, lighter weight. We would like to get an entire um package, which would be cutters, spreaders, rams, batteries, and that's what that line item uh consists of. Uh, I too have about fifteen bottles that are going out of service for fifteen year uh max lifespan. So that was put into the budget. And again, I'd like to put in the budget for replacing a truck uh to get that aerial pumper because of the fact that uh we have in our house here, a thirty-eight year old fire truck that it's starting to cost more and more to keep it in service with the uh, the cost of repairs. We had some repairs even last year that uh, they don't make parts for it anymore and had to fabricate items for it. Um, and I think with the expansion and the um development that's happening in the, the Route Six area, it's, it's time to uh start preparing for that. Um, that's, that's really all I have.
Good, thank you.
Any, yeah, any questions for Chief Baker from the Board of Finance? Nick, I've seen your hand.
Nick, can I go?
Yep.
Again, Chief, I, again, I know you got a bunch of great guys up there and I appreciate the hours you spend up there. Um, it, again, it's, it's for the town of Bethel, it's to have a volunteer department like this is, is, it's a big value. And, and I appreciate it and I'm sure the taxpayers do. Uh, but going back to your operating budget, I see T and D's uh plowing out the parking lot now uh for snow. Is that in your budget or in the highway department's budgets?
That's in the highway department's budget.
So you don't have that in your lines. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Baker.
Any other questions from the Board of Finance?
Yeah, John, uh, refresh my memory in terms of the uh cost of the uh uh fire truck that we are looking at and what's the uh useful life that, of the current equipment?
The um, the cost that I put in for the uh, the aerial pumper is one point three million dollars because it is what's considered a, a quint because it's going to have on a ground ladders, it's going to have the aerial device, it's going to have a, a pump, hose lines, and it's, you know, basically two uh trucks in one, a fire engine and a, a aerial ladder. Um, as far as the age, again, that uh reserve pumper that we kept was thirty-eight years old. The um, rescue truck that we have is twenty-two years old. Um, the first um line engine that we have, engine three is sixteen years old. And the newest truck that we have, the pumper tanker is eight years old.
Alright, thanks.
You're welcome.
Anyone else from the Board of Finance? I don't see any answer. Matt, I think no more questions from the Board of Finance.
Okay, thank you very much. Thanks, Chief. Oh wait, Cynthia, go ahead.
No, no, it's not about, I just wanted to say, I, I just think as a sort of a point of order that we shouldn't really be discussing capital now, right? We're supposed to be really focusing on the operating budget.
Well, it, because the stuff, generally you're right, uh, that's true. Uh, I, I went ahead and asked the question because uh, just to try to uh facilitate uh learning on these issues before we get to it because that's going to be a long night too, a couple of days down. So thank you very much, Chief Baker. Um, thanks for being here. We're going to move on to emergency management, Department two nine zero. And I'd like to welcome uh former chief, uh Tom Galliford, uh who is uh now our Fire Marshal, Emergency Management Director and many other things. So Tom, please go ahead.
All right, thanks, Matt. Hi, everybody. Uh, so for the two ninety account emergency management, I did increase the office expense only to get finally to the spending level that we have to be at for that radio tower lease that uh is part of a five-year lease for the radio tower at Spring Hill Lane for all the radio equipment for Public Works, Police, Fire, EMS. The cost for that this year is, we just paid uh twenty twenty-ones, which was nineteen thousand seven seventy-one. And there's a five percent increase each, each year. So next year, uh, the cost of that radio tower lease for the year will be twenty thousand seven fifty-nine. So I just increased the office expense. So we're, we're at the correct number with that. We've been trying to get up there slowly over the years. Um, so that's the only thing I increased. The same thing, I, I just stayed pretty even with it where we were. You know, really no need to increase anything. A lot of the expenses this year um, didn't come directly out of our emergency management budget for uh the FEMA reimbursements for COVID expenses, but um we were tracking that through a, a separate town hall account. And again, we're, we're working through the reimbursements of that as well now. So we're, we're getting we're going to actually get all, pretty much all the money back between FEMA money and Connecticut relief fund, the coronavirus relief fund money from the state. We'll probably be able to get reimbursed for a hundred percent of all of our expenses concerning COVID uh related expenses, which is good. So that's all I have for that.
Any questions from the Board of Finance?
Tom, I just have one question um about the radial tower lease. I'm not sure I heard all the detail on how much that increases year over year. Are we like at a point where it's going to stabilize or will it continue to increase?
So it's, was a five-year lease that started in twenty eighteen and it's a five percent increase per year. Um, so there were uh right, so year five will be next year. So that, that point we would renegotiate the, the lease on it.
Do we have any leverage to make it, you know, kind of stabilize or is it just going to continue to increase every year?
It'll probably continue to increase. It's, wasn't really my area to, to, well, we really, I guess we really didn't negotiate too much. It was signed over, the lease was signed over to us from the previous owner that sold it to uh Blue Sky Towers, which is a larger company that owns the entire site. So we were pretty much given that that lease. So I don't know if it's something to, you know, either Marty or the Board of Selectmen at some point can go and try to negotiate it for the next time around, but.
Um, to, to your, to your question, Dailene, uh, we tried to buy that two years ago when the previous owner uh put it up for sale and this company that owns it now, Blue Sky, basically outbid us. And uh, to your question, no, I don't think we have any leverage at all because there's literally no place else you can put a tower up there uh to, that, that serves that function. It uh, you know, basically we just have to do the best we can with, with the new owner.
I have a question.
Same.
I should probably know this, but what exactly is longevity? When you have, it's just in the budget and it's under salaries? I don't know why I don't know that.
Um, Bob, you want me to take that? Longevity is, is kind of a holdover from um it's, it's not something that is included in very many new uh union contracts, but years ago, it used to be a like a bonus for staying on the job. It kind of, it goes, so let's say if you've been here for ten years, uh, or five years, whatever, I mean, it, it varied with the different bargaining units. Uh, once you cross that threshold, then you start getting, say, an extra two hundred dollars or hundred, three hundred dollars per year. You know, it was, it was, it was a reward for not leaving, basically, but it was.
Well, gosh, I wish I could have gotten those. Listen, I just want to know um why, so there are several unions, I guess, that you negotiate with. So why would one union have a holdover and then a front like that and then other unions don't? Is it just specific to the union?
Yeah. And, and it, in uh, sometimes those are negotiated um out for new employees, but current employees retain the benefit. Uh, that's, that happens uh when you're making changes like that. It's not an uncommon thing.
Okay, thanks.
Anything else for Tom from the Board of Finance? Matt, I think no more questions from the Board of Finance.
Nope, Ri- Richard, Richard Paul, any, any questions?
No.
Yeah, I got a little quick question for Tom.
Go ahead.
Um, in the, in the future, are we going to be changing our radio systems to um analog? Is it?
Digital.
So will, will we still need that tower or are we going to need more towers?
Um, right, so if we go to digital, that, that's a whole nother, that's a major project. Um, we would probably need more towers. Um, you know, I don't see us doing that in the next three or four years, but the equipment up there and the equipment at the new police station is digital compatible. We would have to swap out some of those components, but you know, not, not the entire hardware system, just some software items. So the system we have in place will, will allow us to do that if and when we ever go that route.
Right, but that, that will happen sometime in, not the near future, but the future is that.
Well, yeah, I mean, the, the federal government, right, they, they have this, they've, they've had a, a plan for probably the last twenty years to have um kind of unified communication plans, you know, nationwide for that.
They're, it's P two five. Only been twenty years.
Yeah, and so it hasn't happened yet. So.
Okay.
So again, we have most of the systems in place that will support it, but yeah, that, I, I think right now, um, we would probably have to do a major radio study first and spend some money to see exactly what we would have to do to, you know, to be, whether it was worth it or not and how many repeaters and extra radio towers we'd have to put up to do that. Basically what it is for people to know, when you go digital, instead of, it's basically like having your portable radios now, pretty much like a cell phone. It acts like a cell phone that works off each cell tower and communicates that way. So you can actually text with your portable radios now and whatnot. And so that, that's what that digital communication would be. So, uh, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Okay.
Paul, any questions?
No.
All right. All right. Well, thanks, Tom. You're up again. Uh, Department 300, Office of the Fire Marshal.
All right. So, yeah, uh, same with this account, um, you know, heating the, uh, the climate we have here with COVID and, and, uh, trying to limit our expenses, um, we, I was able to operate with what we have here currently, um, with the, our subscription services for the fire codes. Again, the state is trying to change those every two to three years. So that always, we have to maintain that subscription service, our software program for our inspections, et cetera. Um, there's no increases with that this year. So that stays pretty uh, flat for, for that budget item as well. So nothing, nothing exciting to report there.
Any new questions for Tom with respect to Department 300 from the Board of Finance?
Yeah. Hey, look, I know I'm going to be very more, I'm not going to say very unpopular, more unpopular this year, but I just want to ask questions about salaries and is that, uh, 1%? Is that a contracted, um, raise?
No.
Okay.
It's discretionary.
Thank you.
And just right, so everyone's aware too, on the emergency management side, that stipend, that $11,000.
About 9,600 and this year will be 9,900 is reimbursed by the state of Connecticut through FEMA for an emergency management performance grant. So that gets reimbursed from the state through FEMA every year for that salary part of that. We have to submit that once a year and that ends up getting reimbursed.
Okay, thanks for that. Yeah.
Any other questions for Tom from the Board of Finance? Don't see any hands on that. I think no more questions from the Board of Finance with respect to Department.
Uh, Richard Paul, any questions?
I, I, my favorite thing, have, have we looked at, um, the fee structure for charging for some of the fees, you know, like raising the fire permits and things like that?
Uh, no, I'm not, this year I haven't. We were a little busy with COVID this year, so I really.
Yeah, I understand. I, I know, I know you're busy, Tom.
I mean, the burn permits, we can, as far as I know, it's, it's not a town ordinance and it's not in the charter. So I don't know what, what act that takes to increase the burn permit, but.
Well, I mean, that was just one, but you know, we, we've been, I've talked to you over the years about those sprinkler permits, uh, inspections and things like that.
Right. And again, right now they just get, you know, they, they kind of get absorbed into the building department as part of their fee structure. When someone applies for a, a sprinkler permit or a fire alarm permit or things like that, it just becomes a building permit and it's based on the cost of the, the project. So that's kind of where those fees are.
Yeah, but you have to go out once a year and inspect.
Correct. Yeah, right. So you would have separately the inspection fees for certain types of occupancies.
And, and just, um, do you also go out and inspect apartment buildings?
We do.
Is, is there a fee for that?
No, there's no fee structure for anything at this time. That was
Okay.
many, many years ago and was, was turned down. So at, since then we have not.
Well, I'll, I'll get Paul after you on that one.
That's usually my question. Tom, Tom, when was, when was, when was the last time you looked at fees?
I, I don't know. It was a few years ago.
About four or five years ago at least, right?
Probably, yeah.
Yeah. Well, I, I, I think Matt, I and Rich will probably conduct a meeting on this within a couple of months. Cause revenues are always an issue.
Is it Brian? Brian has a question. You're muted, Brian.
I, I, I would be remiss because I'm always the counter to this argument. In a year that I know the town is trying to come in to as close to a 0% increase as possible, we're recognizing that people's wallets are strained. You know, don't forget a lot of those multifamilies that you are uh, inspecting are having issues collecting rents right now. And they have no legal recourse to take at this time, which, you know, understandably everyone's in a tough situation. So I continually vehemently oppose the theory of raising fees. It just, you know, our building department operates in a plus. Many of these are operating in a plus. They're bringing in fees. It's doing well. You know, it's just an additional tax that I don't think, uh, the people of Bethel need right now. That's just my two cents. I'd be remiss if I didn't do it every year when we talk about raising fees.
Point of view, Paul and Brian.
All right. Any other questions? And hearing none, uh, we'll move on. Thank you very much, Tom. Appreciate it. Uh, next department is library, uh, Department 435. And I think Tia Murphy is with us tonight. Are you there, Tia?
I'm muted.
You're, you're kind of, you're muted. Tia, you're muted too.
Hi, Matt. Um, Mary O'Leary is our chairman now.
Oh, okay. I didn't see you there, Mary. Okay. And Mary's.
We have, uh, we have a video presentation that, uh, we want to share this evening.
Okay.
So we sent that on to.
Like, give me just a second and I'll get that up for you. Okay?
Alright, thank you.
Oh, you have also?
Yeah. So I, I don't know how well this is going to work, but we're going to try, right?
Okay.
What lap is it though?
The Bethel Public Library's mission is to strengthen our community through our cultural, informational, educational and recreational services. This mission has been the driving force for change over the last several years. The library has been a growing institution, expanding our programming, circulation and technological capabilities. Leading up to the start of the COVID-19 pandemic, the library was on track to hit all its benchmarks for the year in circulation, programming, outreach and building usage. Once the pandemic shut down the state, the library had to move very quickly to redesign our services to safely meet the needs of the community, starting with the essentials. Because we have spent the last several years expanding our digital services, training staff and providing them with equipment to work from any location, we were in a good position to move the majority of our services online.
We've expanded our ability to work remotely, providing customer assistance from home through a soft phone app, live chat on our website and email. The soft phone app and live chat were the first steps in providing virtual reference to the community. This was followed up with reference services through video conferencing. As many of our residents began to use Zoom and similar services, we provided introductory lessons and continue to help the public navigate these new platforms today. Once staff were equipped to assist patrons from home, the library website was converted to a virtual library with easy to navigate buttons that showcased our online services. Staff then created video tutorials for the virtual library that walk people through accessing databases, downloading eBooks, utilizing job and career resources and state library digital resources. Based on all the positive feedback on the new website, we will continue to use a virtual library format in the future. We've expanded our database resources, providing access to ancestry.com from home, adding MoMetrix, a database for test preparation for everything from SATs to real estate exams, as well as Scholastic Teachables, which provides printable mini-books, activity sheets and lessons for pre-K to sixth grade. Our newest addition to databases is Help Now, which provides live tutors Monday through Friday from 2:00 PM to 11:00 PM, as well as language assistance, writing support and virtual study rooms. Once the library building was prepared for library staff to safely return to work, steps were taken to turn our programming room on the main floor into a socially distant computer lab where staff could safely help the public by providing access to the internet, photocopying, scanning, faxing services, and even in-person reference assistants. In order to accomplish this, staff were trained to use remote desktop software to assist patrons at computers from the reference desk. Patrons are able to check email, schedule DMV appointments, renew their licenses, take training and certification classes, and most recently, schedule COVID vaccine appointments.
Once we had the necessary services up and running, we moved our focus to circulation. Immediately following the closing of the building, the process of applying for a library card was moved online. In the first three months, we created over a hundred library cards. Forms were completed electronically and library information was emailed back to the community member. Having a library card provided Bethel residents with electronic materials, including books, audiobooks, movies, TV shows and magazines and newspapers, including the New York Times. We were able to almost double the amount of electronic content available to the community and it was well-used. We saw a substantial jump in usage in mid-March. The next step was addressing the circulation of physical items and the community's ability to browse our collections. Curbside pickup services were established in May and this service picked up traction quickly. Patrons were able to place items on hold through the online catalog by phone or by browsing our newly created virtual bookshelves. From September to December, patrons were able to enter the library and browse the new collections in children's space. In order to physically reopen these spaces, the floor plan needed to be changed and bookcases were spread out through all open areas. Once we had to pause library lobby services, we introduced the bag of books program. After a patron completed a short online questionnaire, staff would fill a bag with anywhere from two to 40 books based on the patron's responses.
Once the building closed, staff had to reimagine what programming was going to be in an online environment. While we couldn't put people in the same room, we had the skills, knowledge and the technology to put people face-to-face virtually and provide a wide range of online programming experiences by using a mix of social media platforms such as Facebook Live, Zoom and YouTube. To stay physically connected to the community, we were present at the farmer's market. We conducted socially distant storytimes on the library lawn. We offered hybrid book clubs and set up a parking lot sunshine table to offer library services and to actually talk face-to-face with patrons. We introduced passive events such as virtual escape rooms for children, teens and adults, an online summer reading challenge for all ages, STEM challenges and scavenger hunts. With the help of the Boy Scouts and the friends of the Bethel Public Library, a story walk was erected around the exterior of the building. This is a delightful intergenerational way for children and adults to enjoy reading and the outdoors at the same time. This winter, we launched a new programming plan for kids and teens that include early literacy and science storytimes, STEM programs, comic book design and a graphic novel book club. We introduced an online bimonthly chess program that will be competing in an interlibrary virtual tournament in the spring. For adults, we, we introduced technology and computer classes virtually, offered alternative book clubs and special lectures, including focusing on genealogy using ancestry.com, women in arts, how to cut the cord, and we plan on to continue to expand these types of services focusing on a workshop for writers and virtual travel. Our monthly trivia program has been highly successful and is drawing new patrons, creating a new sense of virtual community. No one knows what the timeline will be for libraries to safely open to the public. But we are committed to recalibrating in a virtual environment and providing uninterrupted services. While face-to-face programming will resume once it is safe to convene groups, many, if not all of the hybrid and virtual services will continue unabated, increasing accessibility for those who are physically unable to come to the library. Moving into fiscal year 2022, as the library fully reopens, most, if not all of these services will remain in place.
This year, we are asking for a flat budget in order to continue the new services introduced in the last 11 months and reinstitute the services we were providing prior to March 13th of 2020. To strengthen our community through our.
Is, is the, is the video over?
Yes, yes, it is.
Okay. Great. Yeah, Cynthia, I think you have a question.
Yeah. Um, I just, first I, I just want to be the first one to say congratulations for the 0%. And Megan, I, I knew I liked you from the minute I met you. What a, I mean, really impressive, just everything that you're doing and how you're keeping everything so, uh, you know, fresh. And I mean, really seriously, I've never felt, I've never felt that warmth as you for the library before and now I do. So thanks.
Thank you.
I see Mary O'Leary waving your hand. Do you want to speak, Mary? Uh, you need to take us off, or take yourself off mute. See if I can do that. Deanna, I was trying to unmute.
Yeah, you can't. Mary, you'll need to go up to the right. There you are.
Okay, thank you guys. First off, I want to tell you that it's, it's was, I guess, my lucky day to become chair between the last meeting and the budget hearing. I'm a recycled chair, so it seems like deja vu. Anyway, I hope you enjoyed our presentation. As you can see, our library is very, very busy, even though we've been close to the public, work has not stopped at all. Our budget is a budget, isn't zero line budget. Uh, we worked very hard to bring this to you and we know how important it is and we want to be a team player. And the only line difference in our budget is, um, materials and contracts. We took $950 out of contracts, which is bibliomation. Our fee is less because we weeded a lot of books, books that were ancient on our shelves and it lowered our base fee. And we put the $950 into materials because we want to do more online availability for materials. Um, and that is our only change. Every other line item, we're going to work with the money that's there.
Any questions for Mary or the library team from the Board of Finance?
You guys going to make it easy for me?
I think you made it easy for us, Mary. So thank you. Matt, it looks like no more question, no questions from the Board of Finance with respect to the library.
All right, Rich and Paul?
No, uh, thanks to the library board. Great, great presentation.
He, he made our job a lot easier this year.
All right.
So, uh, uh, Bob, I, I just would like to publicly state that our director and her staff, and it's probably I'm zeroing in on, on, um, Cynthia's comments, they have been extraordinary this year and their commitment to our patrons. The, the pandemic has been just awful and Megan has stepped up to the plate and encouraged her staff to do online training. And we've changed, uh, job commitments and everyone has stepped up to the plate and we just couldn't be happier with our staff, uh, and our director.
Thank you, Megan.
Thank you, Mary.
Thank you.
Well, thank you to, uh, all of you, Megan, uh, Mary, Tia, uh, thanks for, uh, thanks for everything you do. Appreciate it. So we're going to go on to our, our final presentation tonight, 360, the Police Department. And I see. Welcome, Chief.
How you doing? Um, Tony Rubino's on. I don't know if Tony wants to start it.
I'll just say, I'll just say one thing. Thank you, Chief. I just want to say good evening. Anthony Rubino, Chairman of the Bethel Police Commission. The Bethel Police Commission supports this annual budget request for fiscal year 2020, 2021. I just say it's, it's a, it's a tough budget that Chief Pugner had to put together. But I'll leave him up to you now, Chief, to explain everything regarding this budget. Thank you. but I'll leave him up to you now, Chief, to explain everything regarding this budget. Thank you. Thank you, Tony. And also with me tonight is Captain Heather Burns is here as well. I know you guys have been sitting here all night, and unfortunately, mine's probably a little bit longer than some of the ones before. The Police Department, as you know, is a twenty-four-hour operation. We're here all the time. Our guys had to work every day through the pandemic. We weren't able to work from home being police officers. So, we always have to be here. We're always here at work. It's a twenty-four-hour operation. With that comes a lot of necessary costs. As you can see, when you go through the budget, there's an extremely high percentage of it is out of control. I mean, just out of contract, direct salary alone makes up eighty-four percent of our budget. Other contractual items are additional eight percent. And other necessary items are seven percent, leaving us with just about one percent that we could actually control in our budget. So, getting to the actual numbers of the budget, I'm just going to get up my screen here so I could follow along myself, too. Just give me one second. The first and biggest is the salary. Not sure what that was. All right. So, the first line on the salary, so it's important I probably go through this line by line the best I can, is total police salary is three million, three hundred and sixty-eight thousand, nine seventy-five. There's a big increase here, and we could probably explain that a little bit further at the end, that there's three years' worth of police contract salaries in this budget this year. But it's really not an increase because it was always in the overall budget, just in a different place. Dispatchers are seven hundred and forty-three, five forty-one. Overtime is broken down in a couple different places. Police overtime, dispatch overtime, and then training overtime. And without training, it was was two eighty-two years ago. It got cut down to two forty-one in this current budget year. I'm just asking to get it back to where it was. It's, there's a three-year average on the first page, so we're just basically asking for what we've been spending over the last three years. Everything else with that, educational incentive as part of salaries, that went up with, as the contract went up. Brad's actually showing the five-year average with overtime right now. And the number we're asking for is basically what we spend. And, you know, sometimes it's a little bit higher, sometimes it's a little bit lower, as you can see, but we're just asking for what we spend. And then, training overtime did go up a little bit this year because of the police accountability bill. We're definitely going to need some more training this year, future years, with some changes of the use of force laws. We're going to have to train thirty-nine officers on completely something that they've been taught since the academy that's going to change now in the way we could do use of force. We still don't know exactly what that outcome is. The lawmakers are still working on it. But when it does change, we're going to have to spend a lot of time retraining our officers. So, there is an increase in training overtime because of that. Do you want me to stop to see if there's any questions about that whole area? One thing I did ask for in salary was an additional new officer, but that's not until well after the first of the year next year, so I'm only asking for twenty thousand dollars to accomplish that. Is there any, do you want me to stop?
So, is that in a total new position, the new officer?
Yes, it is. Yep, but I wouldn't, I'd be pausing it until after the calendar year next January first. So, because I realize it's going to be a tough financial year this year.
So, the force will be, what, thirty-nine officers?
It would bring it to forty.
Forty. Chief?
Yes.
How many officers do you have still in the military?
Just one.
Is there anything that we've heard from him to say when he's coming back, or? He's been in there for quite a while, hasn't he?
Been in there quite a while. No time soon, from what I understand.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Yep.
Chief, so, I'm not going to lie. I've just pretty much, you know, had it with unions, and I understand what their purpose is, and I think it started out as a good idea, but my problem is is just, you know, something that's mandatory raises, it just doesn't work for me. Now, I understand you negotiate, and I have the same question for the Board of Ed. Is there, is there no negotiation or renegotiation? I know that, you know, I'm a little ant compared to the unions, but honestly, it just seems, you know, when you say we only have purview over a certain amount, it just, it kind of, you know, it kind of gets my hackles up. But I'll pause on that and ask you about the thirty-seven percent, or thirty percent increase on professional services.
I didn't get there yet. I was just
Oh, I'm sorry. You're pausing. Pardon me.
Because I realized that salary was such a big thing, Cynthia. I figured I'd give time for questions after the big each category.
Okay, I thought we were, okay, fair enough. Carry on.
All right. If there's no other questions, I'll move on to the next category is office expenses. Just a minimal increase there of two percent. That's just because price of things goes, have gone up, and I think that's just an accuracy of, I don't think we added anything to it last year, so it's just to kind of catch up a little bit.
Can I jump?
Sure. Yeah, absolutely.
I was muted, and I apologize. Can I go back to the, to the one new officer that we're asking? And I see how you're being creative and saying you're not going to hire until after January, but what is the dollar amount for that officer? It's salary and uniforms. I mean, you know, to everybody, twenty thousand, oh, get a new cop, but the following year, how much would that be?
Well, starting pay, I don't have it right in front of me, is, I believe, around fifty to fifty-five thousand dollars right now, starting salary for a new officer. And then
Plus benefits?
Yeah, plus benefits. That's not in my, you know, health insurance and stuff like that. It's not part of my budget. But yeah, there's other expenses involved with it, yes.
So, it's, it's safe to say probably sixty to seventy thousand would be added to your next year budget if they agreed to give you the twenty this year. You wouldn't fire him, right?
No.
Thank you.
Thanks. All right, so, um, we're basically down to equipment maintenance, just a minor increase there. Just looking, the way it's labeled, bear with me one second. I just want to catch up. I have some notes here. So, equipment and supplies is a minimal increase, and that's just, I was trying to see what drove that exactly, but it's just, just an overall, things have gone up in prices. Communications is at a zero. That's just, you know, repair, maintenance of our communications, radio equipment. K-9, the expense of that just went up just because of increase in vet bills and increase of food. Minimal increase. Bicycle unit has stayed the same, I think. Armory expenses, very minimal increase. It was literally a hundred and twenty-dollar increase in armory expenses. And education, right, training and education. Again, that is a pretty decent increase there, and a lot has to do with the police accountability bill. Again, there's going to be a lot of additional training we're going to have to do. The difference between training and training overtime is obviously, overtime is what you have to pay some of the officers to go to the training, and the training itself is the expense of the training. With that, there's also have been a huge increase from the state, what they charge us for training. As an example, we used to be able to send a new officer to the police academy, and it used to be free from the state of Connecticut. They would train him for six to seven months. It wouldn't cost us a dime. Probably about five years ago, went to a thousand dollars. Now, it's up to thirty-nine hundred is, I think, the latest fee we have to pay for a new recruit to go to the academy. And that's part of, it's the state pushing back expenses onto us. Even with the regular classes that officers go to, the state used to provide most of them for zero dollars. We go to the academy, take all these different classes, whether it was DWI, advanced DWI instruction, crime scenes, searches, seizures, all the different types of training, we used to go to the academy for free. Now, there's all kinds of costs associated with that. So, that's why the expense of training is going up. It's out of our control, and a lot of that is mandatory. We have to do certain training. We don't have a choice. Professional services, I know Cynthia had a question on this. There is a huge increase in professional services this year. And again, that's from the police accountability bill. One of the things that they're now requiring is drug testing, which I don't disagree with by any means, and a psychological exam every five years for every officer. So, that increased professional services by thirty-six hundred dollars this year because, again, something out of our control. It was a new law. Now, we have to do it. Clothing allowance, there was a big increase because of contract, contract increases. And I'm sorry, Cynthia, did you have a question about professional services?
No, I think that you explained it. If you're saying that it comes from the police accountability bill and that it's all associated with that, then that would be the answer to my question.
All right.
Yeah.
Yep.
I mean, so it includes the psychological evaluation, the drug testing. Is there anything else included in that, like sensitivity training or profiling or anything with that?
No, most of the other increases with the, that came from that bill are going to be in the training side of things.
Oh, okay. All right. Thank you.
Yeah. And contracted services, just what it is, it's, most of it's stuff that we're in contracts with, anywhere from, anything from copiers to different software, to tasers, to the accreditation that, you know, we're nationally accredited. There's a fee to that every year. Investigative software, including the fingerprint machine that we have to use. The state, of course, doesn't pay for it anymore. We have to pay for it. We have to pay for the maintenance contract on it. The list goes on and on, but again, it's something that's really out of our control, other than negotiating some of these contracts when they become due. But some of them go up. As an example, the car cameras that we do have, there's a maintenance contract with it, and every year it goes up because the cameras are a year older. So, there's more apt to have things go wrong with them, so they're going to increase the maintenance contract on them. So, we have to account for that every year. You know, a couple of years ago, I think it was last year, we did go down for copiers. We were able to negotiate a better contract for the copiers because we piggybacked on what the Board of Ed was doing, and we got good prices that way. I think that's really about it for contracted service. I know it's a big number, so I'll pause and see if there's any questions about it. Okay. The next one is capital equipment, and the the big one there, and there's a huge increase, and the reason they're showing such a huge increase is, last year, we asked for four vehicles, which we have for the last three or four years now, and it's been knocked down to three. And last year, we knocked it down to two. However, one was put into capital nonrecurring. So, that increase is really not a fair number to be shown because we did get three last year, not two. I'm asking for four this year. We've gotten three, I believe, for the last three years, and it's starting to catch up to us a little bit. We have four Mark Cruisers that really need to be replaced next fiscal year. And that's what you see for the increase there. The price of the vehicles hasn't gone up, which is good news. They didn't change the model on us, which is good news. Although they changed it last year, which is requiring us to get a lot of new equipment that we normally would be able to carry over from car to car now that we have to replace. And, you know, is there any questions about the capital equipment before I go on?
Chief, is the total difference, which like Brad is going to expand, the total difference of about seventy-nine thousand, is that completely the two cars?
Um, yes. Yep.
Thank you.
And is there any other questions about capital before?
I see Cynthia, so I can tell she's got a question.
Well, I mean, I just want to know when we're, you're going to be talking about it in whole, in toto. Are you giving more lines of information?
Yeah, I got, I got a couple more.
I will wait.
What's that? You'll wait for me? Okay. So, as you can see, if Brad could pull it up, there's an attached sheet Here we go. This really shows that we have a four hundred and forty thousand dollar increase, I believe, to our budget this year. But of that, it's really not what it seems because most of that is because of salary increases, because of the police accountability bill, and because of the two cars, two additional cars that it's showing, even though it's really one additional car. So, the only thing that I'm really asking for that's outside of what's a real necessity here is a new officer. And I think that's a necessity. I think we've shown over and over again, year to year, that we need more officers down here. We got one last year. Very thankful for that. We're basically finally getting them on the road as these, probably two or three weeks from FTO, and finally on the road, so that's good news. But the town is constantly growing. We keep on adding population, and a lot of the population that we're adding to this town is apartments. And when you put people close proximity to each other, there's more need for police services. And if we're going to keep on growing the town, we need to grow the police department as well. And that's pretty much, well, the only thing, one more thing I would like to add, going back to the cars, is the revenue that we bring in by using the cars every year. Me and Brad have different numbers because we kind of calculate them different ways, but I have it as almost a hundred and forty thousand dollars last year that we brought in in revenue from using cars at extra-duty jobs. So, that almost paid within itself, almost pays for two, if not almost three cars itself. Someone's got background noise. I don't know who it is.
Let's just ignore it for now.
Yeah. Yeah. So, I'm sure there's several questions. Anybody?
Members of the Board of Finance. Cynthia, go ahead. You got your hand up?
Yeah. So, in terms of contracted services, you know, contracted anything, is there no no case to be made for any renegotiations? Because it just seems that, you know, every, it's just more, to me, it's more obvious this year, more painful, that there, we don't have control over anything, you know, so there's that stuff that you have no control over, as if, you know, it's negotiated and it's cast in stone. We are in unprecedented times here, and I, you know that I support the police department. I absolutely do. And I, you know, it's no disrespect whatsoever, but, you know, You know, between the police department and the Board of Ed, those are the biggest administrative salaries and, you know, contracted salary. So. Did you, do you ever consider renegotiating or contracts with leases or copiers, just. You know, stupid stuff that could result in a. In a better number.
Yeah, as far as salaries go, Cynthia and the police contract, that the contracts. Between the the police officers in the town is not with me and the the police officers. I have no control of that whatsoever.
Okay, what about the other contracts? I mean, do you renegotiate? Yeah.
Yeah, we're constantly renegotiating contracts and trying to save the town money where we could save the town money.
Right, I just want to know because it does seem to go up and I'm just, you know, I understand things cost more, but like I said, we are in unprecedented times and. Maybe, you know, people would be more open to some sort of consideration, that's all. Some vendors, I don't know. Alright, that's it.
Bob, can I jump in? Chief, you know, so much for flat budgets and I understand that, you know, everybody's.
It's almost flat.
It's almost flat. Well, you know, it it. I will not support the extra officer during a pandemic. There's six and a half percent unemployment. There's a. That's even without the numbers that people are under under unemployed. That's not the people that are taking furrow days and, you know, town employees always get their raises. And then now we're asking the town to the town residents to pay more. So I won't support the extra car or the extra officer. You know, I think this year should be bare minimum. You know, let's let's get by what we can because there's a lot of our neighbors are struggling, so. You know, I appreciate your time looking at this, but for cars and new officers besides all the raises. I just think it's too much for the town of people to to exorb in a pandemic. This is a hundred year deal. And we're asking for things like the economy is just flowing right along, so that's my two cents.
Any other members, Brian?
Can the can the trade in on the vehicles bring the number down at all? Are you using that for equipment replacement?
Well, it's when we just had took the one of the capital nonrecurring, we were like. Almost dead on what we're doing here with the numbers. With the fifty seven hundred dollars that I'm putting in there, I believe it's fifty seven hundred for the equipment. It's really not a a true number. It's with the trade in that's covering the equipment. So it's almost dead on from what the last year's cars are, Brian. I mean, as you know, I think you do a lot with the fleet. One of the reasons with all the change over the equipment, maybe three or four years from now, when we could transfer equipment again, it'd be a lot. We could save some money.
So you're taking the old, you're taking the old utilities and putting them into the new explorers now, so you gotta replace everything.
Yep. Okay.
I think you are up next.
The regarding the salary increase specifically, how does the police accountability bill come into play there?
In salary increases? It has nothing to do with salary increases, oh.
I thought you said that.
No, and it. The increases there, you're gonna see in the the training overtime, training account. Especially professional services because of the addition to the. The psychological testing and the drug screening.
I was just questioning when you you mentioned salary increase and police accountability.
Oh, no, 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 it's nothing to do with salaries at all.
Brian?
Sorry, see, and how many, how many Mark cars do you have in your fleet, just so I know?
You make me count here.
I'm sorry.
No, I think last time I. Give me a second, I could give you exact number.
Or can you just tell me the ages of the vehicles you're planning on trading in? Five years old?
Yeah, I do have notes on that. Ones I'm planning on trading in, if if I was to pick right now, that could change, obviously. But there's two thousand fifteen to two thousand sixteen and two two thousand seventeens. And they will, the two thousand seventeens are newer, but they're the ones that are going to have more mileage, close to a hundred thousand miles. But it's time we trade them in.
Well, I, you know, I appreciate what you do too. I'm 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 open to the cars. I'm not a hundred percent, this is the year to add bodies. I understand the need for it, but uh. You know, we'll discuss it during deliberations, but I thank you for your presentation. It was good.
Thanks.
Dylan?
Chief, I have a question. I know that last year you had done a pretty thorough analysis of. The amount of operations that were going on in Bethel in terms of police. You know, arrests and other things and, you know, I don't remember if there was an actual optimal number of police officers. That was presented to us, but is forty the right number for our town and would we be adding like? You know, the right number for us now, or can you speak to that a little bit?
Yeah, no, I I think that we should be at around forty one officers is about the optimal number right now for us, where we should be at. My professional opinion. You know, I went, I went in a lot of details last year about other towns, whatever the towns have. Just to give you guys a general idea and then felt like I didn't need to go over all that again. I could, you know, with forty one officers, I think that gives us exactly what we need to do in all areas of the department. We really right now need to probably add an additional person to the detective bureau. And that's where this one additional person probably would go if we were to get it. And a lot that has to do with just the additional, you know, internet and computer crimes and financial crimes over the internet is very time consuming. And you need to get somebody that could go in there and be trained in computer forensics and. Helping with identity thefts and things like that. It's a very time, policing is is changed a lot. A lot of our crime is people sitting behind a keyboard committing crimes now. And we want to have, need more people to do that type of work.
That's great, thank you. And have you seen a. Sorry.
No, no.
Have you seen any, can you speak to us at all about the the impact of COVID to the town police force and. You know, things that might have changed for you in terms of. You know, what's going on in town with regard to COVID and and the police?
Yeah, it's it's interesting. You've seen some crime come down, like burglaries. Because everybody's home, so there's no burglaries last year, which is great news. But you do see a lot of. There's been an increase in a lot of more, call them verbal domestic disputes, just. More and they're fighting with each other more. We did see an increase in DWIs last year and. And that really surprised me a lot because we're not really stopping as many cars because of contact with COVID. So to have an increase of in DWIs just tells you that, you know, there's some crime increasing, some crime decreasing. We took, we we survived pretty good down here at the police department overall. Now, a lot of our guys have gotten their shots, so we're in pretty good shape. But it, you know, it did, it did take a toll on us. I mean, we had to learn to do things different. We tried to do a lot of things by phone. That we normally would need, you know, have people come in and meet us just to limit contacts. But overall, business is normal. Crime is still committed. People, you know, we're still arresting people in the middle of the pandemic and. You know, so much for, you know, six feet social distancing when it comes to policing. A lot of the times, we just could not do that.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Chief, I have a question in terms of the, you referred to the internet crime. What type of internet crime are we investigating on a local level? As opposed to deferring that to, you know, state or or federal? What's what what is falls under the province of Bethel?
Anything, if if your identity stolen here in Bethel, we have jurisdiction to investigate it. Now, sometimes it turns out to be overseas or across the the other side of the country, but we would be the ones still in doing a lot of that investigation. Unfortunately, a lot of other area departments don't put as much time and effort into it as we do. You know, because I think a lot of thing is like, oh, well, the person might have gotten their money back or. But we are, we're in the mindset that we want to stop it from happening again. So we put a lot of time and effort into identity thefts. And you're right, a lot of, a lot of things can get turned over, but we want to make sure that they do get turned over properly and that we have. All the information possible, so there can be, you know, prosecutions down the road in some of these cases.
Thank you.
Yeah, um, so chief, so forty one, we have, we have forty one officers right now, right?
No, we have thirty nine.
So, and the person that you want to hire is a detective for the cyber crime?
That's where I would put that additional officer if I had them, is what I'm saying, is that like. If I got to forty, we're at thirty nine, if we got forty, I think the question was brought up by somebody like, what would you actually do? Where would you put that officer? And that's, yeah, and.
So let me just ask, let me just ask this. Would it, would it not be possible, for example, to. Because you're saying you're going to train them up, would take existing officers and. Train them for that?
Yeah, well, that's what would happen, but then what I'm saying though is you need to replace them on the wherever they are now on patrol. So, now the the question was, I forget who asked it, nobody asked me, how many officers do we think that we need overall? Like what, where's the end of it? You know, like I think. They were under the impression that we keep on adding officers, but where where do we think we need to, should be?
Question said forty one, I just thought we had forty one, that's all.
No, we we have thirty nine and, you know, I'm very grateful that you guys have. You know, let us add a couple over the last five years. It's been very helpful, but I think we're just a few more off to where we need to be, that's all.
Is that counting the deployed person?
Oh, no.
Okay.
Well, the thirty nine, yeah, he's one of the thirty nine, correct.
And and chief, what I. I appreciate consistency. And and you've told us now for a couple of years that forty one is your targeted number. You told us last year you were going to meet, you're going to come this year and ask for somebody, or actually, you may have asked for two last year and got one, so you're going to ask us. For one this year, we we may not get there on the end, but I I do want to thank you. The consistency to me suggests that there is a. A genuineness to your ask, so so thanks for that.
Thank you.
And chief, could I just say one more thing, just to clarify the numbers? So we have thirty nine, including the person who is currently on military leave, correct?
Yes.
So we have thirty eight on the streets, quote unquote, but you feel like forty one would be the right number?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Steve, can I just clarify that? You have two officers at the schools.
Oh, yeah, that's a good point, Bob.
Minus one, minus two.
Yeah. And, yeah, yeah, I'd just like to mention that we do have, you know, the two SROs and. That is, you know, part of our salary is the the two salaries for them that are at the schools. And yeah, we get them for the summer, but um. You know, most of the time they use their vacation for the summer and not really with us for the summer. So just wanted to bring up that point and it's broken down in the salary account this year as such, to show the SRO separately.
No, no, chief, the the number thirty nine includes those two.
Correct, yes.
So you you do your thirty nine, you got two. You got the one individual who's.
Correct.
I see Rich, wait, hold on, I'm sorry. Look, Nick, Nick, you got a question?
Yeah, chief, what officer is deployed and how long has he been deployed for?
William Holland's been deployed now for over a year. You're frozen, Nick.
I I saw him in town the other day. Are you saying he he's?
He is deployed. As far as the military is concerned, he is working from a a unit out of Massachusetts. He's doing a lot of his work from home because of COVID. Sometimes he goes, I think it's Brockton, Massachusetts, he goes back and forth and sometimes he goes over to Danbury and works out of there, but he's. With the military, he's not with us.
So his salary gets held over because we're not paying a salary and then that gets used in overtime? Just explain to everybody how that works?
Yeah, it's in the budget, the for, the position is in the budget for the thirty nine officers, yeah.
Are we paying him each week or not paying him?
No, we're not paying him.
So that money goes back in and pays overtime?
Yeah.
Yes. Right.
It's, you know, if I can, if I can jump in here, Nick. You you've raised a really good issue. We don't pay him while he's deployed, but at the same time, we don't have his services. Pay overtime and we can't hire anybody to replace him.
But his salary.
Yes, that's correct.
Alright, as far as the Board of Finance, any more questions for Chief Pugner? Don't say, so so Matt, no, no more questions from the Board of Finance regarding.
Rich, go ahead.
Department three sixty.
Yeah, I just want to point out that one reason why the the increase in the salaries looks so high. Prior to that, it was in wage contingency. So that's, the money was, you know, being paid out of a different account, so it wasn't in a police department account. Is what I'm trying to tell everybody, so they understand that, that that looks like a jump there. But it was in a different, the wage contingency account.
So, excuse, if I can just add to that, if you look at the schedule Brad just brought up, that four man three ninety seven, that's the nineteen ninety, no. Two thousand seventeen wages and it's been escalated over those four years to the current salary level. So the first three years, the one on nine and ninety one fourteenth and round numbers. Basically, we're in, like Richie said, in wage contingency. The difference that seventy nine thousand is because we might have lost some senior officers and we hide. Lower level offices and it would account roughly for that seventy nine thousand dollar difference. So that's what I was trying to show in the schedule. That it's it's an eight percent increase, but three of the years were already included in wage contingency and the increase this year is roughly one oh six. Which would be the last.
Rich and Paul, any other, any other questions?
Yeah, I have just, just a quick question, perhaps this is for Bob Kozlowski and and the chief. Since the big item on the budget is these four cars, have we done a study if there's a. An advantage to lease versus purchase?
That's funny, I asked the chief the same question.
Yeah, for when it comes to the actual police cars themselves. It's really not a true lease, it's just you're paying for payments over four years with interest. So it's really not a true lease. There is some possibility that possibly. Lease unmarked cars, we've looked into it in the past and. We go round and round the circles if it's really a cost savings or not. Because the unmarked cars were able to keep a lot longer than the patrol cars. So we feel that buying, we get, you know, the unmarked car that we traded in last, I think was almost ten years old or ten years old. So we get a lot longer life out of the unmarked cars as we do. The marked cars and if we were to lease the, we would get, have to turn them over more often. So I don't know if there's really truly a cost savings to it.
From a maintenance point of view, it might be cheaper, but it wouldn't it?
It it might be, like I said, we've gone back and forth of it. I've. Consulted with other departments and including Brian on here, I've called Brian because I know Richfield does some leasing and. We've looked at different options and, yeah, it it's, but when it comes to the um, the regular police car cars, Paul, the mark cars. There's no real cost savings or that other than just kicking the can down the road with the the payments, spreading the payments out. So you could save some money this year, but three or four years from now, you're going to have huge increases because you're going to have. Those payments start to overlap each other, if that makes sense.
Are are any of these cars unmarked that you're projecting for?
No, 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 I'm not planning on replacing any unmarked cars next year.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Matt, I think that's it.
That's it. Rich, any more questions?
That the capital was the main thing of the cars, the main in the capital, or was there anything else in the capital that you needed?
Nope.
Okay.
No, well, we still have to deal with the firing range at some point. Yeah, that's that's
Yeah.
Well, and then if we touch in on the, this is operating and that the capital portion of the operate, were we touching on the capital itself, Matt, or no?
No, we're going to do that in another day.
Okay.
We'll do that together with with the other capital.
Okay.
All right. Bobby and Frida, anything else from from your board?
I'm going to speak on behalf of the board and looking at their body language, I think the answer is no.
Okay.
I don't know if it's good or bad going last.
Well, hey. This is pretty good. I mean, we had some, you know, a lot to do tonight and it's only quarter after nine. I can remember some midnights, you know, not to not that many years ago. So this is very efficient.
You're you're angering the budget gods. We still have three more sessions.
So Bob Manfreda or Deanne, remind me, do we adjourn this meeting or do we recess it and just pick it up? Is this one long meeting?
You need to adjourn this and then there's a separate agenda for Thursday.
Okay, all right. Well, in that case, if there's no more, no further questions, I'll entertain a motion from the Board of Selectmen to adjourn for tonight.
So moved.
Moved by Paul, signed it by Rich. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, that carries. So Board of Selectmen is adjourned. Go right ahead, Bob.
Thank you, Board of Finance. Entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second the motion.
I will say Robert Palmer made the motion, De seconded the motion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.
All right. See you next time.
Bye.
Well, thanks.
See you Thursday night.